All right, we'll start with, I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for Wednesday, July 1st, 2020 at 7:37 PM. As a preliminary matter, this is Jason Norma, the chair. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Kathy Franzen? John Stokes?
Here.
Chris Goodwin?
Here.
And, um, not gonna, well, should we include in this, non-voting members in this, Amy, or does it matter? Yeah.
It doesn't, it really, it doesn't matter. You have the four members that have been, that have been with us throughout, so you're good.
Now, if when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Our council, Amy Kessel?
Here.
And we have Paul Haverty?
Here.
All right. And our secretary Rebecca Olden?
Here.
Okay. So, good evening. This open meeting of the Groveland Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely, consistent with the Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend the public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Groveland Zoning Board of Appeals is conducting, is convened by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and take care not to share, screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided, members of the body, are available on the town's website. We now turn to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure that accurate meeting minutes. I, the chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members, inviting each name to provide any comment, questions, or motions, being a little bit looser with this since we only have a few people on. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Finally, each vote will be taken in this meeting by roll call vote. All right. Are we ready to open the, start with our agenda? I think we got everything out. So I would like to make a motion to continue the application 219-3 for several streets. Groveland Realty and Trust LLC, care of William Daley, request a comprehensive permit pursuant to the provisions of MGL 40B 20-23 and 760 CMR 56 to construct 192 apartment units in four residential buildings, a clubhouse with related amenities such as a pool and associated accessways, sidewalks, parking, utilities, stormwater infrastructure located in the industrial zoning district. All right. But what's on the agenda for tonight, Joel, are you?
Yes, I am here. Good evening. Good evening, everybody. Can you all hear me?
Yep.
So tonight, in the evolution of our ongoing discussions, I think it is the intent tonight to review things about conservation, which I know you've heard so much about over, over time. And, you know, a lot of these stuff, you know, ultimately, there is going to be an, or an application for order of conditions that will be reviewed by the Conservation Commission, those regulations that we much adhere to issued by the state. But because this, this filling of the pit and Mr. Daley's work around this particular area, we thought tonight that we would add two people to our team that have joined us. We have Chip Nylan, who is one of the founding partners of Lynch, Simone, and Nylan in Boston, who specializes in the practice of land use, but more importantly, in understanding environmental and regulatory law. And what Chip will do in a few minutes is just try to take you through the history of the site. What is Bill done in the past to get permitted? What are the, are the areas of concern, how they have been addressed? We also have with us tonight Brian Butler from Oxbow Associates. Oxbow is, is the wetland scientist and it's an evaluation of the rare animals and species. He's familiar here also to be able to discuss these things and to answer your questions. And as you know, in our discussions, we concluded last time, at least for the moment, things relating to civil and how that would work. And then we talked about the fact that our next meeting would focus on therefore, how does this site and what it's doing and how it relates to the things around us? The turtles, the wetlands and what have you. And we thought that it would start out by Chip giving you a summary and understanding of what has been permitted and what is done to date as sort of a backdrop for our discussions tonight. And if that's okay, I'll let Chip take it from here. Chip, you need to unmute. Chip? Chip, there you go.
Still don't do that right. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Nice to see you, Amy, as well. So as Joel indicated, I've been involved with this site for several years, for predecessor owner and sat on a CONCON myself for a number of years. So I've been doing this for a little bit. And I think I just want to let you know that when Bill purchased the property several years ago, there was an outstanding order of conditions with respect to a detention basin onsite and work that had to take place. He made sure to construct that detention basin as had been approved by the Conservation Commission. And even though most of the site is upland and disturbed, from a stormwater standpoint, it was important for us to develop a way for stormwater to be controlled, managed, and then treated. So he did that. The second, after that was completed, then he went out to perform some work by bringing Phil on to the property. And again, he went through all of the hoops that are necessary. Filed with MEPA because there was a state permit that was required. He went to the Department of Environmental Protection, got an order that allowed Phil to be brought in. He went to the Natural Heritage Program, secured a permit for nesting habitat. The Natural Heritage requires you to put aside a substantial amount of property in order for you to develop a priority habitat. I think everybody in Groveland knows that we've got landing turtles out in this area and everybody has to accommodate that, the turtles. And he did that as well and went through all of the permits that were required and secured all of them. And then when he filed, getting ready for this project, as, as Amy knows, the Wetlands Act is a little different in that it requires you to apply for obtainable permits before you file with the Conservation Commission. So you go to the Zoning Board of Appeals and you go to other boards before you file with the Conservation Commission. So as I think everyone on the board knows, we're going to need an order of conditions for being located within the buffer zone to certain resource areas as well as being in, in riverfront area. So we do that, we'll, we'll apply for that afterwards. What, what we did was we filed a request for a resource area delineation with the Conservation Commission, which is what you do when you're getting ready to develop a piece of property, want to obviously identify which jurisdiction. So Bill made sure he filed for that. There was a difference of opinion as to where the riverfront area is. But in other instances, as Brian Butler can attest, we've established where the resource areas are. And we then, Bill then developed a plan based upon where those resource areas are shown on the plan. And we're going to go forward with, with that project. The, the only, the other thing I wanted to talk about was, was I received a copy of a letter from the Conservation Commission to the board dated in March. And I think I, and I just wanted to hit that just briefly. The Conservation Commission was asking the board to take into account several of their concerns with, as you're performing your duty and going through the 40B process. I think most of these comments I would consider to be premature in that the CONCON will have the ability to regulate the project under its own jurisdiction without having to rely upon the Zoning Board of Appeals to attach any conditions. I will say in the first instance, I disagree strongly with a statement that's made in the chairman's letter to you that suggests that we would not be able to build this if the bylaw applied because of a prohibition in the bylaw. There, there's a regulation, a restriction for commercial and industrial uses, but this is a residential use. So there's no prohibition within the, in the, within the bylaw for this project. The other concerns that he states on behalf of the chair, on behalf of the board, relate to the entranceway, which again is in the buffer zone and therefore it's regulated by the Conservation Commission and they can attach whatever conditions that they need to. He then makes reference to monumentation, which is a common practice by most Conservation Commissions that like to put either markers that are either living or granite or otherwise so that the successor owners know where the wetland jurisdiction is so they stay out of it. And again, that's something that takes place during the Conservation Commission jurisdiction and they clearly don't need the CBA to help them with their own business. There's also reference to a need for erosion controls. Bill knows better than anybody in town what erosion controls are necessary, has done that for most of his, his working life. And I don't think we've ever had a problem with erosion controls out on the site. And again, that's something that we will do in accordance with the Conservation Commission conditions. The chairman also makes reference to monitoring. Again, we see monitoring more often when you have a high density wetland resource area alteration. Now, if somebody is altering bordering wetlands and you have to create new wetlands, then there's a lot of monitoring that takes place. Again, I don't think, since this is primarily a buffer zone project, that it warrants a lot of monitoring. But again, that's not something that the zoning board should have to deal with because we're going to be in front of the Conservation Commission and they can, they can take care of that. There also will be seasonal restrictions because of the Natural Heritage Program dealing with, with the turtles. You can only do work during certain times of the year. So I, I think that, I didn't, I didn't see any difficulties with the, with the chairman's letter to the board. I think it raised a number of issues that the Conservation Commission deals with on a daily or weekly basis, just like you deal with zoning. They know these things and I don't, I don't see a need that the zoning board is going to have to get into the weeds, no pun intended, in order to, to regulate some of those activities. So, any questions you may have, I'm, I'm here to answer.
Well, let me, before we go to Q and A, let me just ask Brian, do you have anything you want to add into the, for factoids? And you don't necessarily have to, but I want to give you that opportunity before questions are put out there.
Thanks, Joel. No, I don't really need to add anything. I think Chip covered, covered the bases thoroughly from both history and, and permitting process to date, so I'm good.
Okay, great. That being said, what would the board like to ask of these gentlemen? You guys are surprising me now. Typically, there's a whole host of questions. Though, you know, one of the things I'll just comment while you're thinking about it for a second is that, you know, Bill and his efforts to fill the quarry and to, to deal with what is, was Chip, clearly a dangerous situation for the residents of Groveland, you know, has really taken a very proactive approach to being a good steward of the land by identifying and working with these guys to know what they needed to do and then going after it along the way. And so I know that's again, not within your purview typically to comment on, but I just want to make you aware that, you know, that nothing about what we proposed would lessen the same sort of approach to protecting the environment going forward.
Quick question, or at least a quick comment?
Go ahead.
So, the question I have is, first of all, Mike Dempsey was supposed to join us tonight and I was hoping that he would be here to talk about the letter that he submitted and to be able to discuss some of these issues with your experts at the same time. But I just found out that he probably will not be able to attend. So he said he would try, but he had a conflict, so he may jump on here at some point. But, so we don't have the chair here, which is, I was sort of hoping, because he probably has, as you could probably tell from the letter, he has very specific questions and concerns and stuff like that. So I wanted him to be able to present those concerns to the board because obviously he does raise a number of issues. So, and some of these issues are not in my expertise, that's for sure. So I was hoping to hear from him. But I guess what I would like to know is from Amy probably about what, if that is really true, is that do, do we need to address these items as part of the decision? Or can this be sort of kicked over to Conservation for them to address after? Or just make it a condition of some sort that they would have to go through Conservation?
So, so thank you, Amy Questle, Town Council. I was also hoping that Mike would be here because I, I also had a few questions for him that I would like to, I would like to hear his input on. Particularly, I'm, I'm confused about the, the wetland delineation with regard to riverfront, how that was not, that wasn't agreed upon. So, so where is that, where does that stand right now?
Would you like me to, I don't want to interrupt. Would you like me to answer that, Amy?
Since, since Mr. Dempsey's not here, if you, if you could.
Sure. So what happened is out, out there, there's a stream bed east. And it's an interesting one because it's got, it's, it's either intermittent with perennial segments or perennial with intermittent segments. That is, it's not a very large watershed, it's less than half, a half an acre. And under stream stats, there are places along the streaming bed that are clearly intermittent and there are others where it's over a half an acre and the CFS is over 0.1. We provided observations downstream, which is usually where the greatest flow is, of eight days of no flow at all, which would mean that it's intermittent, meaning that there's no riverfront area associated with it. The DEP said that those observations were off-site. For those of you, it's down in Chesterton, which is further north. But again, it's downstream where, you know, usually the watershed enlarges as it's traveling, just as you would suggest. So we went down, had eight days of no flow at all in the, in Chesterton. And DEP said, no, we need something from the property. So, you know, we've been going back and forth and discussing that. We appealed that decision, Amy, so it's in front of a hearing. And, and then from, at the adjudicatory hearing, we're going to provide additional evidence that it's an intermittent stream.
Okay, so, so essentially where we are now is we don't know where the jurisdiction, where jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission lies. It could be 100 feet or it could be 200 feet is essentially in these areas is what he's saying. So, so with regard to the, the, the comprehensive permit in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals, what you are being asked to do is you are being asked to step into the shoes of the Conservation Commission with regard to the local bylaw. And there, there was a reference, you know, there was a vague reference to the local bylaw in Mr. Dempsey's letter, which it would be nice to get a little bit more from, from the commission as to what exactly they're looking for, for the ZBA to condition based upon the local bylaw, the local wetland bylaw. I, I, you know, I would agree with, with Attorney Nylan that anything that has to do with the Wetland Protection Act will be dealt with, with the Conservation Commission. These are, these are circumstances where, you know, I understand that the Wetland Protection Act says that you should apply for all of your, all of the permits that you can get under 1005. It says that you have to apply for all permits obtainable. It, it doesn't necessarily state that you have to receive those permits. So a lot of times with 40Bs that have sensitive environmental issues, the applicant will apply to the Conservation Commission at the same time and therefore we can work on this in tandem because if the Conservation Commission decides that structures can't be located within this 100 feet, then the project has to be redesigned and it, I mean, it would have to come back to you as a modification. That would be a major modification, which starts this process all over again.
Amy, if I could though, I only disagree with one premise. You said, a, a change in a layout of a road does not really constitute a major modification.
I never said a road. I never said a road. I said a structure within 100 feet, if they deny structures within 100 feet. So, and, and so furthermore, I, you know, I, I think that it would be helpful in this instance if the Conservation Commission was able to review what we're reviewing. So, you know, it's too bad that that didn't happen. But at the same time, we have some, we have this letter from the Conservation Commission, which I think is excellent. It, you know, it gives us a lot of information to work from and it lets us know exactly what they would like to see, which, which I think is, is, you know, is, is very valuable. Some of the letter that they have, the sum of the letter that they submitted has to do with the Wetland Protection Act, which does not, is not in the zoning board's jurisdiction. Right now, you are only stepping into the shoes of the, of the Conservation Commission with regard to the local bylaw. And so I think that it would be helpful if we could go through the, the, the numbered comments at the end of the, there was, you know, 10 things that the, that the applicant, or I mean, 10 things, I'm sorry, that the Conservation Commission was seeking. And I, I would like to know if any of these are a, an absolute, you know, for lack of a better term, a deal breaker, that the, that the, you know, the project cannot be, cannot be viable without, if, if we, if we implemented these as conditions, that the, that the project could not be viable.
Well, first off, just to make one correction, just clarification, there are no structures, even if that setback was deemed to be determined greater than we have assumed. The only thing that impacts is the location of the driveway entering the project and some grading. And at that point, if that determination was made, yes, we would have to do a minor modification to that layout and come back and present that as a minor modification to the zoning board. But it's not any more buildings.
200 feet?
There's no buildings within that area.
There's no buildings within 200 feet?
No.
Of the river? Okay.
Amy, and just for the, the board's understanding, the, whether 100, 200 is, is a big cosmic difference there. The stream, whether it's intermittent or perennial, is interior to the wetland by 100 or more feet in some places. So it's not an additive, the 100-foot buffer zone is based on one threshold. The 200-foot is a threshold is far interior to that, so it's not.
So what about the amount of fill? That seemed to, that kind of jumped out at me. What's your reaction to that?
There's very little.
Attorney Nylan, or Brian, either one of you, what's your, what's your reaction to that? So if, if, for example, if the zoning board said, no, you cannot have that amount of fill, how would that affect the project?
There's very little of the actual fill to be placed within even the most extreme, well, actually, no. The riverfront area, if you consider the entire stream perennial, which we, everyone understands is not, there's still a very, only a tangent to the fill, there's 700,000 some odd yards, tons of material to be placed in there, but very little of that actual fill is in the riverfront or in buffer zone speculatively or otherwise. It's mostly in the old core basin and to the south of, or to the east of the old basin.
And Brian, are you, are you, when you say that, are you saying that with riverfront inner and outer riparian? So you're saying 200 feet?
Yes, there's, there's changes are, there's grading in what may be riverfront area under some scenarios. There's no structures, as Joel said, but the majority of the fill property, high elevation of the fill is far beyond any resource area or, or buffer zone. And so, so what I'm saying is the filling part of the project, actual raising of the grade from what existing, pre-existing in the quarry hole and in the old gravel pit that was formerly the Deviasee property is, that's fairly extreme, but that's set off by a considerable margin for any of the resources.
And then?
With the road, that it could be considered fill, but it's not really the quarry, the reclamation of that, of the quarry. It's grading for the road and drainage, which is fairly conventional.
So, so if you have the, the letter from the Conservation Commission before you, you know, the third paragraph where it says that they had asked both, you know, the applicant and DEP what the total potential contamination could be from, from this. But, and they, they actually have some figures where it says, you know, the calculation of results from summary testing for fill. So, so what is, what is the answer to that question? Do you, do you guys have that?
Well, the, the testing that's taken place is according to the administrative consent order. And, you know, every load that's tested at the source and then it's tested periodically when it comes to the site. I mean, it's.
So could you, Chip, could you, or I'm sorry, Attorney Nylan, could you, could you give us some details on this administrative consent order? What was the impetus of that?
So since we're bringing in material that's equivalent to, you know, what we call urban fill, you can't bring in any fill that is, that has reportable hazardous waste. That's illegal. So they have a policy that if you have what we call urban fill, which is slightly degraded and is not as degraded as the site, you enter into an administrative consent order with DEP that sets the conditions for placing the fill on the property. And the most important is, and it's actually, it protects the town, it protects the applicant, the owner, and the person that's delivering the fill. So they had, the, the fill has to be tested for the parameter, that there's no hazardous material contamination. And it's not just tested once, it's tested more than once by the, at the source and by the applicant. And then there are also, the department can come in as well at any time. So that's what the intention is, is to make sure that there's no hazardous material that's being deposited on the, on the property.
And, and, and there's been no, no breach of the ACO, correct? Everything that's come in has been tested?
Yeah, we, we have not, as a matter of fact. Yeah, we, we have not, as a matter of fact, we've asked for an expansion or extension of the order, of the administrative consent order with the department to bring additional fill in and haven't heard any difficulties with, with the department at all in terms of what we've done to date.
Okay, and then, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I did have one other, one other area that I wanted to review with them, which is, which is the turtle habitat. So, it, it appears from the, the letter that we received from the Conservation Commission that they're not satisfied with, with the wildlife management program that's been pursued and I was, or, or proposed, I should say. And I'm just wondering if the applicant has any comment on that portion of the letter?
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer to Brian because that's his specialty. But I will say that I appeared in front of the commission several months ago and they agreed to take the property, the Dviase piece, a substantial part of the Dviase piece to be the character for that. So, they will, they will be involved. But I'm, Brian, it's best to talk to you about the habitat.
And Brian, maybe as part of this presentation, you might first inform the board because this conversation between Amy and Chip gets, you know, crazy. You might explain, how did it start? What did you do to investigate? What was the permitting process relative to this? So, they have some basis to understand the context of what is being discussed today.
Certainly, Joel, and I'll try to be brief. But the history of this particular project and our, my firm Oxbow goes back, I think, to a couple of days before Mr. Daley purchased the property. I was on the site with him, trying to advise him on what the liabilities or constraints might be under MESA, the Mass and Dangerous Species Act, because the site was known to be associated with landing turtles and was going to have some constraints. It wasn't going to be a free enterprise zone under the Mass and Dangerous Species Act. So, that was 2017, I think, Bill. Since that time, we, as Chip noted, we generated a conservation and management permit through consultation and coordination with the National Heritage Program. And through MIPA, we filed an ENF and subsequently a notice of product change also under MIPA, or to MIPA.
Be careful with your arachnisms. Not everybody might know what they all mean.
Yeah, Mass Animal Policy Act, I'm sorry. And essentially, the permit that was issued by the Division of Fisheries and Wildlife that regulates the Mass and Dangerous Species Act was to allow the filling of the quarry, some management of habitat for nesting, because that's a limited commodity. As the quarry kind of succeeded from Bear Rock and Dviase's gravel works to scrub land, the nesting habitat shrunk from a couple of acres or more down to, in recent times, about one acre of land, which is undesirable, because the less habitat you have to nest in, the more the raccoons feast upon your eggs. So, a larger nesting area is desirable. And that was a component of the permit with natural heritage was to create and manage in perpetuity an environment that's not going to last on its own. Sand pits don't stay sandy in the, on their own in Massachusetts. They either succeed to scrub in weeds and Russian olive and buckthorn and things like that, or they become a strip mall or some other interbiogenic feature. So, the permit was, the whole project in my estimation, really a paradigm for serving a number of needs. The quarry was filled, that was a liability to the town, to whatever landowner. That was kind of a liability, waiting for somebody to go over the edge of that cliff and kill themselves. It also gets rid of a lot of urban fill in a local environment that's a needed resource when things are going on, when the, when the economy is active. And it was providing 12 acres at that time, in the initial permit, 12 acres of intact and partially managed habitat that was conveyed to the Division of Fisheries and Wildlife. And it was also adjacent to areas that are already in fee to the division. So, it complemented the Conservation of Landing Turtles and Wildlife in general in, in step with the division's mandates. So, the permit, and it also allowed for development of residential housing, 40B affordable housing complex. So, it was across the board, it was a kind of a win-win-win. And from an ecological standpoint, I can vouch that it was, is a net benefit to landing turtles that are continually getting squeezed in the Essex County area and George Grove, Georgetown, Groveland and surrounding towns where the landing turtles spread over a wide area of landscape, but in low density, low numbers, and they're continually getting, losing ground by developments of one kind or another punching into the outholdings that they still persist in. In this case, we're kind of doing the opposite. We're taking an ice, the degraded portion of a property, the quarry, filling it, bringing it up to grade, making it a useful environment and setting aside a significant, it will be, the final analysis will be 20 acres of permanently conserved landscape with about five acres of it perpetually managed for the benefit of landing turtles, which you can't, you can't prescribe that kind of thing. The Division of Fisheries, if they own property or DCR or any other agency or even conservation organizations, they don't have the budget to maintain nesting habitat. We, on a project I'm working with, with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, they had to spend $25,000 to clear three acres of land for turtle nesting habitat. And now they have to man, manage it. And that's, it's getting away from them and it's turning back into a scrub land, because they don't have the budget every year or every three years. This is, is a departure from that kind of watch it go away and watch the habitat succeed and get lost. Because as a requirement of the conservation and management permit, this habitat will have to be managed going forward in perpetuity essentially by the owner, the fee owner of this complex, so.
And how is it managed, Brian? What, what happens that protects the turtles in essence in this habitat?
It has to just essentially be kept, the best turtle nesting habitat, if you're, you know, in the post-colonial time at least, is things like gravel pits, railroad embankments, agricultural fields in that time when they're abandoned, but they haven't turned back into scrub land and forest. And that, and it, it doesn't take many years. And a turtle, one of these landing turtles could breed for 60, 70 or more years before it replaces itself in the population. So, these habitats in eastern New England and Massachusetts just don't last. It might, a bare piece of gravel might last 10, 15 years, but there's somebody, perishes weeds that, that can grow in almost anything, that it's often less than that. So, it's basically keeping the vegetation to less than 50% at a maximum coverage. So, basically, a gravel pit that's been abandoned between five and 15 years. If you could maintain that condition in perpetuity, then the landing turtles will never have to look elsewhere, which usually means crossing a road. And you know how many times a turtle can cross, let's say Salem Street, looking for a new nesting site successfully? It's usually less than one. So, that's, it's basically just keeping it in a successional state where there's no topsoil, where there's no significant vegetation and where animals can find places to construct their nests. They're going to get in, you know, full sunlight and the incubation temperatures they need.
That was, I know, a mouthful. So, maybe there might be questions here before we go on about that, that Brian answered. I'm used to Brian, so I've heard him talk and expand, like he expands like he does before, but.
Besides the 40B, the whole, the whole package is really, like I said, a paradigm for, for success in a number of ways. And I'm, I'm not, my big concern is not affordable housing, so that's not my bailiwick. But my concern is with rare and endangered wildlife. And short of just, you know, stopping all development and putting all the land aside, which is not a practical solution, this is a very, you know, 20 acres of land, no matter what you value it at, that's going to be managed and complimentary to Division of Fisheries land that they already own on two, maybe three sides, two sides of us at this property. You, it's, you can't, you can't wish that.
Joe, with respect to management and the point that I offered at the beginning of this discussion, it maybe was out of context, is when the additional land owned by Dviase that we now have will be set aside in a conservation restriction for protection of the turtle habitat, that won't be conveyed to natural heritage in fee. There will be a restriction in the commission indicated at a hearing that they would be the grantee that would hold that restriction. So, that suggested to me that they had an interest in, in participating in that management.
Yeah, I think they appreciate, I mean, they're, they express concern on this and other projects in the town for rare and endangered species habitat management and preservation. And so, it seems like the letter we got from them, a letter of intent that was directed toward the National Heritage Program as part of our amendment for the conservation permit indicated that the commission was quite willing to participate in the process and hold that land in fee, or in, as you say, held the restriction on that land, which is about, out of the 10.5 Dviase acres, I think 9.3 of that is going to be placed into CR, conservation restriction.
And during this process of going through natural heritage and permitting it, what was conservation's involvement on a local level to have visibility, comment in that process?
I'm sorry, Joe, what was there?
How would they, how is the local Conservation Commission aware of your application to natural heritage and documentation and provided? Were they aware of all this as you were submitting, going through process?
Yes, and they were, at least Mr. Dempsey and a couple of members, other, other members of town government were present at the MIPA site walk, probably a year and a half or thereabouts ago. So, it was, you know, no big secret, yes.
The reason, the reason that we didn't answer it quickly is because the majority of the habitat is outside of the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. It's more than 100 feet away from the wetlands. So, even though you think that habitat would be within the jurisdiction of the commission, it's not. But they have remained involved and engaged and followed because we have to copy them on, on our filings. And that's how they remain aware as to what we're proposing out there and how it will be managed.
Can you explain how it's not in their jurisdiction? I don't understand that.
Chip, if I can?
It's not, it's not within any activities that are being performed or outside of the Conservation Commission jurisdiction with respect to the habitat. So, we didn't need to get a.
So, so under 1060, it's not under 1060?
Well, it would be 10.59.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. But, but how would it not be under their jurisdiction?
10.59 only applies to actual, alteration of actual wetland habitat for wildlife species. So, you have to be altering a resource area, altering the, the wetland resource area in order to trigger that jurisdiction. And then even in the, in the regulations, it explains that the issuing authority or the, is the Natural Heritage Program. So, the commission, the local commission under 10.59 of the Wetlands Act regulations is supposed to seek the guidance of the Natural Heritage Program for their input and guidance on whether or not a, a alteration of actual habitat will take place under the Mass and Dangerous Species Act, which the commission does not interpret or regulate or implement on behalf of the Commonwealth. That's what we're, most of our work, or virtually all of our work is under 321 CMR 10, the Dangerous Species Act. And they don't, the commission in the Commonwealth has any real authority under that statute.
So, it's a little bit circular. I, I don't understand how if you're creating habitat, it's not within their jurisdiction.
Because we're creating habitat outside of wetland resource areas.
Which then, wouldn't you, if you created, if you created habitat, wouldn't that then become part of their jurisdiction? Because don't the, don't, doesn't the habitat have to mimic some kind of resource area?
No.
The turtles can just live on upland, and so then why are they protected? I guess is my, that's why I'm saying this is circular.
Well, certainly, go ahead, Brian. Go ahead, Brian.
The wetlands where turtles live most of the time, most of the year, it's the species in particular, are kind of de facto protected by, by the State Wetlands Protection Act in 401 and 404. So, they're, they're in much less jeopardy than the terrestrial aspects of the habitat. And nesting is about as terrestrial as you can get. It's almost a desert environment is the preferred nesting habitat. So, it's often remote from water. It's often hot, much higher elevation than any aquatic habitat for the turtles. And so, it's, and by virtue of that, it's easily consumed. And sandy areas are great for septic systems and subdivisions and so forth. So, basically, you know, most of those good areas for turtle nesting have already been consumed in the Commonwealth, either by development or just by natural succession.
So, the area that's being created is only for nesting?
Yes.
And how much, how many times of year, how many times a year will that be used for nesting?
By an individual turtle, once, or probably 0.7, 0.8 times per year. Adult landing turtles nest like every, once, they skip every third or fourth year, so.
Okay.
But it's a, it's a critical resource that is in short supply. And even if it's, even if somebody went out today and made 10 acres of nesting habitat and then walked away, five, 10, 15 years from now, it would be completely gone and useless to that population. And those animals are going to, you know, in the pre-colonial condition and for 200 million years or so, or at least eight or nine million years for this species, they could go across the landscape unfettered and sit, and find a new nesting habitat. It might be, you know, five miles away, a new wetland, a new nesting habitat. You can't do that in Massachusetts with roadways for a turtle. So, having a perennially available nesting habitat, it's always going to be there for the same females that might live 70, 80, 90 years to come back to year after year without having to rethink their, their life strategy and find a new habitat is, is a real benefit. And even, you know, the best program in the Fish and Wildlife Service or any of the state conservation organizations, they're only as good as their funding and somebody's ambition to maintain that lasts. And that's, you know, people get old and die and retire and go away and budgets change. This one is a much more, has much more staying power than any other provision for this kind of habitat that I've seen. And we've worked on a lot of conservation projects.
So, are you at all aware of the industrial park, Federal Way Industrial Park? Are you at all aware of that and the, and the concern the commission has with that?
I mean, we, we're, we look at that and we say, you know, to be frank, what the hell happened? Yeah. It, I've seen the data for where turtles historically have been. And they've been in that, they've been in that industrial park within, you know, the last decade or more, or thereabouts. And we say, you know, we're doing exactly the opposite of that. We're preserving the habitat before it gets, or we're not going to let it ever get developed as, as a component of this product. 20 acres are going to be.
So, so tell us what went wrong with federal, with federal park, with federal way?
I don't know the history of it, but if that was happening, that would be developed.
I don't think what went wrong with federal way is relevant to this, because I'm not sure, without a formal study, I'm not sure we have any, any scope on what the state of federal way is or why. I think I want to stay focused on Seville Street and not bring in other projects that we're not covering here.
Well, like, I can, I can rephrase my question. What I meant was, how, how is this project? How, what level of protection do you have on this project that will, that will answer the commission's concerns with regard to federal way? What's different?
What's different here?
Brian, if we can, wait one second.
Yep.
Well, this is a great discussion. I am just, this seems to be a con-con.
It, it is, I agree.
So, as far as the scope of ZBA in regards to this conversation, what's the scope that we should be actioning here?
Because the ZBA has asked you to incorporate 10, 10 issues in their letter, which I think that you guys have to figure out if you, if you can incorporate those 10 issues or if they should be more addressed by the commission. And, you know, are, are, do these 10 issues, are, are they a concern for the zoning board of appeals? So, I, I, I mean, I think that, I think that if Chairman Dempsey were here, he would want you to go over those. But again, I don't know that and he's not here. So, if you guys are not comfortable going over these because he's not here, that's fine.
Well, I think, you know, certainly comfortable walking through these and at least getting some scope. If we need to refer back on anything, I think we can do that. But I'm certainly comfortable walking through one by one and at least getting some response on these. I don't know if, I'm not sure what the applicant with Joel or Brian or any of the, have had a chance to really, you know, what their, their responses are on these. We haven't had any, any, any comment from their side. So, I, I'll walk through them now. comment from their side. So I, I'll walk through them now. There's two, there's actually two letters. There's.
We could just ask for them to respond in writing to, we could ask for them to respond in writing to the 10, to the 10, you know, requests that will be, that be, to be conditions in the comprehensive permit and go from there. That might be.
Yeah.
That might be easier because then we have something to go off of.
Yeah. First, I want to clarify, we have two letters from, from the conservation commission. The first was March 18th, which does touch on a couple of things around the bylaws that I think we might want to discuss a little bit. And then the second one, which was appears to be a response for, well, is literally the reply to the application for additional fill for Seville Streets. And I'm not sure without Mike here exactly what on this list is related to the additional fill and what is related to the original plan. And that's where I get a little confused about this list.
Jason, so this, this list?
Yeah.
This list is in response to a MIPA notice of project change certificate that I received on, in March. That was sent to the commission back in January for comment period, which they, they didn't send any comments into, into MIPA. These are the comments that only pertain to the DBSI parcel that was part of our application for the notice of project change with MIPA. And to be perfectly honest, I mean, just there's a few of them in there that really don't pertain to, to Concom at all, like a 75,000 bond or protection of aquifer for 20 years. These are things that are, you know, most of these things are covered in permits I already have, like my ACO from DEP for the filling, my conservation management permit for the turtles, like even number 10, for, for example, we have to install an eight foot chain link fence for the turtles. That's, that's the complete opposite of what natural heritage wants. That's already in my permit as part of my, my, my end product. So, you know, and supply another $75,000 bond for fill that's been brought in, you know, on top of the $75,000 bond I have. But if I'm halfway there, the bond should say the same. But I don't know where the, what jurisdiction comes into this with Concom, you know. So, but we can run through them one by one. I just, but this was in response to John Fitzgerald when he reached out to the selectmen. And the selectman reached out to Concom to see if that any concerns. But this was after the notice of project change certificate was already issued. So I, I, I have the permits for, for everything right now.
And Bill, is any of this, just to clarify, is anything in those 10 items that came about as a result of the 40B application from the ZBA? Or are they all relating to what you're doing outside of the 40B application?
These 10 items only relate to the notice of project change that was submitted to MIPA on January 21st. They didn't submit comments in the, in the required 30 day comment period or 20 day comment period for project change. And when DEP reached out to the selectmen to see if they had any other concerns or conditions they would like to impose on the amendment, before he wrote it up, which, you know, typically they, they like to do that to get the sign off on the, on the board. And the board reached out to a couple, to a few departments. And this is what they received. So, but it only pertains to, you know, the subject matter is only the DBSI parcel. So this doesn't pertain to the whole project. This is only in response to an email from the selectmen to Concom because selectmen received, it was, it, it wasn't what DEP was looking for. The comment period already passed. DEP just wanted to know if the current conditions or the agreement that I have with the board select with the operating hours, the dust control, the noise control, the, the number of loads, the access routes, all that stuff. That's, he just wanted to make sure they were okay with all that. And if there was anything they may have made, may want to add on top since, since the project started. It wasn't a chance to go back and revisit the whole notice of project change application. That, I, I have that certificate for, for that parcel.
Yeah.
But that's all. But, and like Chip said earlier, I think any of their concerns will be, you know, worked out through an order of conditions. Because just at face value, looking at these real quick, it's, you know, a lot of them are outside jurisdiction. Just, just like I mentioned, number 10, that's the completely 180 of what the natural heritage would like to see at the end of the day in the, in the new nesting habitat.
Yeah. So it sounds like it makes sense to have you work this out with Concom rather than us go through it here because it's
Yeah.
really not in our, our scope of expertise on any of this stuff. And then, you know, hopefully we can get a response back from Mike once, once he get a little more clarity on what the, the details are. But since it's, you know, it's, I, I don't want basically to walk through this list and just infer what Mike meant. I think it's better for you and, and Concom to work through it on your own, you know, between you two, rather than us trying to infer what they, what was intended and how it relates to us and all that kind of stuff. So.
So I, I agree. And we work with the state too. And there's, you know, I, I think that's the right way to do it. It's not something that we can avoid or skirt around. This is going to have to be dealt with. And there's going to be a final order of conditions. So, you know, no one knows what that buffer zone is yet, you know. So this is all going to be worked on. I, I, I think you're right. I think we, we work that out. It's going to take, it's going to take some time. It's going to, you know, it's not going to happen this month and maybe not even happen this summer. But, but it's something that, that has to be addressed and, and worked through and negotiated. And, and yeah, there's a lot of things on, no, no problem. But there's some things we need to talk about.
So can I just ask, did you help clarify, Chip, if you could? So in the process now that's helping to determine what that, that boundary is, what that area is, that the issue about the river, how long do you expect before a, that, that a decision is rendered on that? Because obviously until that's rendered, we would not apply for an order of conditions. Because if in fact there was a determination different than we envisioned, it would impact obviously some modifications to some of our systems and location roadway, which would therefore impact order of conditions. So it would be, it's, it's not appropriate to go in front of the board, the conservation commission today.
So before I answer that question, I just wanted to explain to the board, when, when I offered my opening points, I focused on the March 18th, 2020 letter because that was the one that specifically was directed at this proposal. I didn't consider the response to the fill request to be in front of this board because as Bill has indicated, it was in response to DEP about a matter that didn't have, have anything to do with the 40B. And, and that's why, but, and I did go through each of the items in that March 18th letter. With respect to your question, the adjudicatory hearing process isn't like most litigation. It's clearly collapsed and condensed, probably will be heard sometime in September. And, and, you know, we will probably have a very good idea of where we stand in, in October. But as Bill said, it's not going to be in the next month. It will be in, in late fall.
I have a question about the fill, if I may, without getting off the track too much. Is there a, a general consensus number or a percentage of how many loads have to be tested? It seems to me point five, point, half of one percent doesn't seem like a lot of testing. And, and who's going to check that? I mean, is it under our purview or is it Concom? I think you're saying it isn't Concom. So who is it? Who's going to be responsible for checking that?
So, under the administrative consent order, the first test is at the source. That's the party that is sending the film material to us. And it's in their interest because if they have hazardous materials, they will own those hazardous materials. If the way that the hazardous material statute runs, the liability doesn't expire. If you're the person that generates the material, it's yours. So that, that's the most important is that first test that takes place at the source. Then the, the testing at the next end is based upon tonnage. And so not every 50 cubic yards is, is, is tested, tested enough so that you can determine within each load whether it's contaminated or not. Again, the key is, Bill doesn't want hazardous material because he owns that property and that, once that lands on his property, the owner is liable without regard to fault. So if somebody puts that in, that's his and he, he owns that. So that's why you put in these protections to make sure that you test as often as will tell you whether or not that's a contaminated, contaminated material.
And I think the question though was to you is to then who tracks and monitor that? Who sees those reports to ensure, how does it get monitored? I think that was the question.
The professionals, right?
Excuse me?
Go ahead. This LSP on the generation side is working for the benefit of the individual generating the fill. And then there's an LSP, a licensed site professional, working on Bill's behalf on protecting the quarry's interest or the field project's interest. And those are both professionals licensed by the state and they report to the Department of Environmental Protection.
Do they report those findings to DEP?
Then there's a third party, comes randomly unannounced.
The department?
A third party approved by the department. I have to pick off a list, comes randomly once a month. But these samples, so when there's, say there's a 500 ton pile, it's not just, and, and that requires one sample for that 500 tons. That's not just one shovel full out of one area. That's, you know, 36.
It's called a composite.
Yeah, the grab samples. It's, it's, it's taken all over the pile and analyzed. So it's, it's pretty representative. And depending on what comes back, it may require more testing. It may require one for 250 tons, every 250 tons. So it's, it's the protocols that are in place. I mean, that's, that's what the department uses. The testing's expensive. I think I said it before, you know, it's about $500 a test, more if you want expedited. Takes about a week to get the results. And then, but there's also, they call PID screenings, where, so when it's getting loaded out, there's someone there with a, with a, with some sort of instrument that can get readings on volatile organic compounds as it's being loaded out all day. They're there. That person's there checking every, every other truck.
And the licensed professionals required under statute, if there was something reportable to notify the state, correct?
Yeah. They call PID screens, it's something above parts per million for, for the VOCs. And if it exceeds five, that's it, stops. So they have some special tool that does it, some instrument that, that can read it. And, and it's all in the policy. So, I mean, can you go above and beyond? Sure. But is it required? No. And, and like I said, it's costly, but it, it's, it's pretty representative. And it goes back to even where the soil's from. So if you have one pile that has to go to Ohio because it has, you know, PCBs in it, but another soil came, pile came back clean right next to it and was right next to it in the parking lot of the same building, they're not going to allow that. That's all going to go worst case scenario. Like, like if the, if the property was in Old Tannery or something, probably, probably all going to, to a landfill or something. But if it was a, you know, an old apartment complex or an old CVS or Walgreens or something, it's, where there's no history of, of, of bad organic compounds or, or dye companies, tannery, stuff like that, gas stations, it all plays a role into, into how they, they test it. Because like I said, they're not going to take a pile of containing, you know, like, like valley screw type stuff that came back with high PCBs, but the pile next to it came back clean can go to someone's back. Yeah, that's, that's not acceptable. That's.
And I never understood why all the bad stuff goes to, literally goes to Ohio.
Ohio, yeah.
Yeah, it's really very odd, but that's where it goes.
There's a lot of options. I mean, there's places here that recycle it, make asphalt with it. It'll go through batch plants, it'll burn it. You know, they can remediate it. There's a whole bunch of options, but it, it's costly. So the, and that's, those are just the rules. There's, depending on how tests come back, that, that determines how much testing is required moving forward. But there's constant, and, and sometimes, yeah, you, you, that third party, I think I, three things so far, three months came back. And you keep a load off the side, they come back and get it. Is it a perfect system? No. But, you know, they do their best. And, and that's, that's the policy for the department. Because otherwise, the other way, and I, I've mentioned a thousand times, is, you know, what they're trying to do is get rid of that clean fill wanted sign at the end of the street. Because, now I use valley screw as the example, you, that's the best gravel on the planet. But that's, you know, the most hazardous. You can't tell by looking. You would have no idea. So when people are taking material, even at the high school, they're calling me for their loom, their loom is, came back, where it needs to be treated, you know, handled and managed properly. So, you know, all our kids have played, played sports there for, for years. So you, you just don't know. You don't know by looking. So that's what they try to eliminate, you know, the, the clean fill wanted signs and everything's going everywhere. No one knows anything. Because without the testing and that's, is it a perfect process? No. But it's, it's the process that, that everyone follows through the DEP. But there's plenty of oversight, I, I, I think. And, and people, these LSPs, they, they can lose their, their license if they, if they, you know, for lack of a better term, pulling any funny business. You know, they're not, they're not going to rubber stamp something to get it to a certain facility for an extra dollar or whatever, or to make it go easier. It's, that's, that's their license. It's not, it's not like an oop. They just can't say, oops, that's, that's an issue. And DEP, Jason, John Fitzgerald, the DEP, he's, he's on that stuff. He reads it all. He picks up things. And, you know, we've gotten a couple fines when we first started because some overlapping tests of soils came in. And there was some, a couple periods there where we didn't get the monthly testing done in, in time. And he's on, he, he knows. And, and, and they look at it. It's not like it just gets thrown in a folder. They're on it. And that's, that's the policy in place. And that's what they try to do. So the school's a perfect example. You know, they have a lot of soil that, that needs to be managed properly. And that's kind of what this facility is for. Because there's, I think there's 100,000 tons coming out of there total. You just can't bring that to people's backyards without issues down the road. So that's, that's kind of how it is. And, and it's all, it's three, three times. You know, that third party comes out unannounced once a month. So it could come out yesterday and today, for example. You don't know.
Did Bill answer the question?
I hope. I don't know what the question was anymore.
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
All right. So one other thing I wanted to bring up.
Kathy, I think you're muted.
Kathy? Kathy was looking like she was saying something.
Yes, please. Jason, do you mind if I ask a quick question?
No, feel free.
Okay. So Bill, the question is, I think the heart of the matter is, is, is that documenta, is that process documented along the way? So when, you know, when it's tested at the site, when it's tested along the way, when it's, you know, is that documented all the way, let's say through DEP and they have all those results?
Yep. So everything's uploaded on a daily basis. Hard copies are kept in the trailer. Monthly reports with DEP signed by myself and the LSP. And everything's on the DEP website and uploaded to a Google Drive and hard copies in the trailer.
So that data that's available on the website, at the trailer, wherever it may be, is that the, that seems to me like that is the data or the proof, let's call it, that Concom is looking for, right? Because I, because there has always been a question about the fill over there. And I think because you got a fine in the beginning, you're now going to be known as the guy who got the fine, right? Okay. So that's how it is. So now they're always going to be watching that. So, but if you have the backup documentation that goes with that, and you can prove that everything that you have there is fine, then I don't understand why there's an issue.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't either. I mean, here's the thing, I don't even.
What you have will satisfy them.
And, and I think that's why, really to have this discussion further, I really think we need some from Concom president. Because without Mike or some, or some representative from the team, we're kind of spinning our wheels here.
Well, here's the other thing. It's, I'm, something popped up on my screen. My filling operates for 95% of it is outside of, of Mike's jurisdiction. So I don't, and I have all these permits already. So I don't, and I have all these permits already to do this. I have my amendment, I have my ACO, I, I have my-
I think the concern is from the community, right? And I think Concom is probably the one who's talking about it openly. But I think there is a concern from the community, what's coming in? Where's it coming from? Has it been tested? What's happening? Because this is Groveland, this is where we all live, including you. We all want it to be, you know, we don't want to import other people's problems. It's like buying a used car, right? You don't want to buy someone else's used stuff. So I think it's a concern across the community. Concom happens to be the mouthpiece at this point, but I think it is something that the ZBA should at least hear about and consider and make sure that what is coming into Groveland is, is clean. Because there's a whole bunch of people here in town who are watching the ZBA because they know that this is where it's happening. So address it here, address it now, get it over with and you want.
I can wrap that up right now. So I, I think the letter from Mike saying he wants the land, wants the filling and the surface features are completed, that he's, he wants the land should be sufficient. I mean, it clearly states in that letter from him to fishing wildlife, that Concom wants that land, wants it filled to the design grades on the plan. It, it references the, the phasing and the, and the grading and all that in that letter that, that he, that he wrote inside. So I think that, that's why I don't understand, you know, I have a letter from him saying, yeah, Concom wants the land, wants the filling and the surface features are, are completed. But yet he wants all filling to stop. And, and this other letter, you know, three weeks later, I think the letter, I think you guys have a copy, February 10th, he, he signed that letter, saying how they, they wanted the land. I think Chip was actually at that, that meeting. So if, if Concom wants to take receivership of the land after it's filled and the sand placed on it, I, I don't know what else I can do to.
But can I just add a comment today? Kathy, just a question, okay? Is that, the issue about the fill is separate and distinct from the 40B application? And that if the 40B application were in front of you, the fill operation will continue? And if those same questions were of concern, isn't this again back to the conservation and/or a question back to the state? Or I'm, I'm just not sure that, how that comes back into the zoning boards purview in this particular case, because it's separate and distinct from what's in front of you.
But I understand, I'm trying to hopefully address a community issue. Because ZBA is the only format with which the community has to come forward and, and provide their feedback or questions. So I would, what I, my point was is if we handle it here, this is the appropriate place. Because the public is invited, however, no public is here, but they may watch later, is my point. So I just, I know it's a question all across the town, so let's just get it out there and, and figure it out. And if you have, if Bill has the documentation, then I don't really see where there's an issue, except for the fact that you were saying it really doesn't fall under here, but the problem is the project is going to be built on all that fill. So the project is part of it, sort of, in a way, in a indirect way, but it, you know, it's part of the project. So that, I'm just trying to get it out there because it's a concern. You have the documentation, as far as I'm concerned, it's sort of settled.
Yeah.
That, that concern, they can take it up with you later, but as far as like, you know, at least you've addressed it here, it's not just been ignored.
So Bill, the information, Bill, the information is posted to the public website.
Well, the documentation for the fill is, it's, it's huge. It's, it's, you know, it's huge. So maybe a link to the Mass DEP website.
That's what I was going to suggest is partly what Rebecca should have.
Yeah.
Public record, it's out there, they can look at it if they want to. That's all I needed to know.
I'll send that link.
Thank you.
That'd be the easiest way.
And Rebecca, wherever you're holding and putting this information, make it accessible, you know, let's put that out there so that people know if they have questions regarding how it's being tested in the process or the test results, that they can click on the link and they can look at it. Because I think that what I'm hearing Bill says, it's all transparent and it's out there, which is what the issue is at hand. It is nothing being hidden, it's transparent and available to the public.
So that way, conservation, when you get to that point, they can look at all that data and if they have a question with it, they can question you on that down the road. But at least they have access to it now. Everyone in town can look at it if they want to and they can raise any issues from that. But at least it's out there, it's public record, it's fine with me.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think we've hit this pretty well, but I would like to just tell the board that this is an issue that every community faces that wants to bring in soils. That's why DEP established a policy that requires all of this to be started with an LSP as we talked about and to be tested throughout and for all of that to be a public record. So, you know, the days when Bill made reference to clean fill wanted, we, we've seen those all throughout the Northeast. And, and DEP wanted to get away from that and to give a community a way that this would be regulated and it would be public information. So that's, that's why they developed the policy, even though it's not hazardous material, it's material that people would be concerned about. And that's why they developed the policy and they follow it and everything's public record and available to everyone in the town.
Okay, we'll get the link over to you guys, over to Rebecca.
Thanks, Bill. I do want to jump back in, I think there's, in the March 18th letter, I think there were a couple of things that were specific to our bylaws, which it sounds like is the area where we do want to kind of pay attention to, because that's not covered by the general CommComs, or that's basically within the scope of what we're looking at here. And I just want to get some follow-up on these. The first one is the CommCom's request for the third-party monitoring of the sites during all times. I don't know if you've, you know, I think you've discussed this with them. This is the third to the last paragraph in the, the letter, but I know they do, we do require monitoring of the, of a general site within that 100-foot buffer zone. I suspect there's going to be a lot of monitoring on site anyway, but can you clear up what this, what this discussion was on this?
Why don't you respond, Chip?
So I, I actually did address this earlier. The order of conditions under the Wetlands Protection Act gives them jurisdiction over activities within 100 feet of the resource area. So they have the ability as part of the order of conditions to establish a condition in terms of what monitoring they would be looking for. I mean, there's a variety of activities that would be taking place out, out here in a number of areas. So that's why we, we think it's premature to have the board look at it when the commission has that ability as part of its review to establish whatever monitoring they think would be appropriate for whatever work we're performing. For instance, if there's bringing in fill over in connection with an area, then they would want monitoring, then, then that could be, that could be required.
And they're asking the ZBA to include some comment that is, or condition is, is not appropriate because it's something that would be dealt with as part of the order of conditions?
The reason I think it's, I think, the reason I think it's premature is these things are tailored to the specific activity that's going to take place. And that's what the commission would be weighing in on when they're issuing their order. So yes, I think that's the most appropriate place for it to be considered and dealt with.
Yeah, I think that's fine from my perspective, because like I said, there's going to be a lot of monitoring considerations and, I mean, we can certainly put in a stipulation that, you know, there is monitoring, but this doesn't really give a lot of specifics on what they want monitored. So we'd have to defer to them on that. The other thing that was particularly called out in this is the, the seasonal restrictions on work within the 100-foot buffer. And I, just to step back, because I don't think I have a good map of what actually falls within that 100-foot buffer. This is really just talking about the, the entryway off of, so it's basically just the, roadway coming off of Salem Street. None of the actual buildings are within this space.
Correct.
So the, the work would be restricted to, you know, kind of grading and filling and creating that road area. Was there any, you know, is there any issues that you guys have with that restriction on the, the timeframes of that?
Yeah, that's a, a little bit draconian, given the potential for hazard here. We're not beetling over a wetland where there's a high potential for erosion into the resource area. And further, we have restrictions on the time we can do certain aspects of site work, at least go in the next year or thereabouts. With regard to the turtle, we're be hoping to avoid any potential for mortality of turtles, eggs or hatchlings. So the work, it's almost antithetical to the temporal constraints that the bylaw puts forth, because work, site work, Bill, I think is April 15th is one of our cutoffs. So we can work from October 1 till April 15th and protect the turtles in their, that whole suite of interests. And the prohibition, the temporal prohibitions in the bylaw are almost the exact opposite schedules. That depending on how things come, sort out in the future, that could be very constraining to progress for the project.
And would this typically be an item again, that would be part of a, or a discussion of the order of conditions?
Yeah, again, that, that's the right point, is that these seasonal restrictions, again, are driven by whatever activity you're dealing with. And since we're only dealing with grading and roadway within jurisdiction, if there's some specific part of that construction that they think should be restricted because of a danger to the resource area, then that's something that they can include under the Wetlands Protection Act. True. So they, they don't, again, as Amy, Attorney Questle mentioned, it's, the question is, what, what is it that the ZBA can be imposing that the board is unable to, the commission's unable to as part of the order of conditions? And again, if they think that a seasonal restriction is critical to protecting a resource area, they have that authority under the Wetlands Act and, and it should be tailored to that, to that activity. As opposed to a general, you know, seasonal restriction, without any nexus to what they're seeking to protect.
All right. Yeah, I'm just basically following up with the specific things that stand out as bylaws for us that, I don't have anything further, is anybody else? Kathy or Chris or John?
Not, not me, but I think your follow-up with, with Mike or someone, or a rep from Concom would be in order.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One other thing, I don't know, and Rebecca might have something, if we have a, a plan with the actual 100-foot buffer shown, I've been through so many plans, I can't remember if I actually saw one or not, but I don't need to show it right now, but if we could get a, a reference to that, so that we get better scope of what we're talking about here and.
They're all identified.
Yeah, they're in Brian's civil drawings, aren't they not, Bill?
Yeah, they're all in that and what's really clear is in the, the turtle phasing plans.
All right.
Is there a plan that shows where the 200-foot line would be if it is determined to be a perennial stream?
So the 200-foot line is just about the 100-foot line of the wetland, because the stream is 100 feet in from the wetlands.
Well, I, I understand, yeah, you can't just-
I do, I do have one, it's very, very difficult to see, we'll have to take some layers off because of so much other stuff there, it's hard to follow, you're losing them to grading, but, but yeah.
Just because it seems like this is probably not going to get resolved before the board closes its hearing.
Right.
It, it should be information they should at least see.
Yeah, we can send over a, a, an SK or something for that, sure.
And as Paul, as I said earlier, that if it was ever found out to be 200-foot and it did impact the roadway layout or some grading, obviously we'd come back with a minor modification to the plan to reflect those changes. It's, it's a test plan, we've, you know, we've not done that where, but in discussions, we don't think it's problematic. It just would mean some redesign of that segment.
But getting to see the plan ahead of time, the board will at least have a sense of what the potential could be.
Should I email that to Rebecca? All right, does anybody have anything else to discuss in the, beyond what our next steps are?
So if you want some comments on some suggestions, the next steps, I will be glad to offer some ideas.
Well, one thing I was going to bring up is I will not be available on Wednesday the 5th, which is the next regular meeting time, standard meeting time. I don't know what the state of in-person meetings are going to be in the near term.
Based on Governor Cuomo's today proclamation, I would expect that it's going to be pretty tight for a period of time here. And we, we can assume that we'll probably be still in a Zoom environment. That would be my-
Yeah, I mean, certainly, certainly for the next open slot, which would be the Wednesday the 15th this month, if we have anything to cover then. And then if we stick to the regular schedule, that would be August 5th, which I won't be available on August 19th. So I'm not sure what we want to do.
Well, I, I would right off the bat say that we're happy to provide Rebecca the required extension of time. And the fact that you all have been spending so much time with us and are aware of this, I would, we would be just as happy to postpone to such time and making sure that you all are attendance, since you've all been valuable contributions with your questions and concerns.
Is the 19th?
No, I mean, actually, strictly speaking, if we're on Zoom, we don't have to stick to the, the Wednesday, or there, there's no, the main reason we stick with the Wednesday schedule is scheduling the rooms for the meetings more than anything else. So we do have, you know, on Zoom, we have a lot more flexibility about when we want to do the meetings. So I think it's just a matter of coming to a consensus on what, what our best option is for the next, next meeting or two.
Well, maybe Jason, with that goes to the question of what are next steps too? Because some of it may be some time. So if, if I tell you what my thoughts are, is that at this point, we've gone through pretty much all the components of it. So it's really a question to the board of what are the open items you wish to discuss? And it could be something to revisit as a result of some other discussion, is to come back and to make sure that we have adequately addressed any open items of concerns you might have. We've covered over these months a whole host of issues and discussions. And then once we've gotten to that done, then the next discussion would probably be to review and discuss the, what we're asking for, for the exemptions, you know, for, from the board. But to spend some time to discuss and review those so that you're aware of what our requests are and how they're pertinent to the plan, so you can understand those as, as a basis to then formulate your decision. And we probably have a closing comment or two along the way. But, but those, that's sort of what I think would, is where we're at if, unless somebody I meant waiver requests.
That sounds reasonable to everybody. Paul and Amy, do you guys have anything else you want to?
I, I don't.
All right. And I think we have, I, I think it makes sense to leave one more meeting open for general discussion. Maybe we can get Mike to join. So I guess it's a matter of scheduling, figuring out when we want to schedule that, you know, we probably want to give a little bit of time. So I'm not sure doing it in the, the next two weeks are necessarily giving us enough time to kind of go back through and review, but any opinion, any opinions on availability and timeframes over the end of July, August?
Probably August for me.
And all we would like to know is, is if we're going to have a general discussion, this is a specific area we're going to focus on to make sure we bring the right party back with us. As you can see tonight, Brian and Chip are essential to this discussion. So we'd just like to know that so we can make sure we invite them as well too. I unfortunately have no vacation plans, so I'm available.
I don't mind, you know, towards the end of August, around the 19th there, because that gives us some time to move forward, DEP maybe. Have some more info for that, but if you think it's going to be a meeting of general discussion and maybe some CONCOM and then another meeting to kind of tie up loose ends, maybe we do try to, you know, get something earlier in August and then something late in August. I, I, I don't know. Or I could even go beginning of September. September is going to be a little hectic with, with school starting up, but it, it's what you guys think. If you think we could do one long one towards the end of August with Mike and, and wrap up loose ends, I'm, I'm fine with that. But if you want to get Mike on and, and, and try to figure out loose ends, that'll be two more meetings, I think, right?
Yeah. And loose ends, I define a lot. Obviously, we need to discuss the waiver requests so that we'll, you know, as a result of all of our discussion, we will send to Rebecca again, a final and consolidated version of the waiver requests as we know them to be. And certainly that's going to be part of our discussion. I have no doubt.
I guess that's a question I have is are we comfortable letting Joel and Bill work out with Mike on his list and probably just getting a report back on what that is? Or do we actually want to sit down with Mike and talk through it?
I have an opinion on that. I know you're all shocked. So Mike, I think that we went through a lot of this stuff here tonight already. And we went through basically the questions that we had. It seems like a lot of these issues are with Mike. I don't have a problem if the applicant wants to reach out to Mike, address any issues or maybe, you know, if they want to reach out outside of this, then they do that if they feel the need, you know, if Mike to, you know, satisfy whatever Mike is asking for, but I don't, I don't necessarily need Mike to come back here. I think we've gone through everything at this point. And I, I think ultimately it's going to have to go through the order of conditions anyway. So like for us to hash it out with Mike and then they're going to hash, hash it out again to the order of conditions. It's like, it seems a bit redundant in my opinion, but that's my opinion.
Well, we, we assumed that Mike was going to be here this evening. That's why we didn't respond to that letter. It may be helpful to the board if we respond to his March letter and ask him why the commission doesn't have the ability to regulate the areas that he identified under the Wetlands Protection Act, and maybe that will advance the discussion.
I think that would be great. And that way, you know, he can address any, you know, he can respond back to you. And that may all happen before we meet again anyway. So if that happens relatively quickly, I think all of that could be resolved outside of the hearing. And then if Mike feels, still feels like after your discussion, that there's still something that the ZBA needs to address as part of their, you know, discussion, then maybe he can bring it forth at that point. Does that sound fair to you guys?
That sounds fair. And Chip just volunteered, I sort of raised his hand to take this task on, so.
Why don't we go towards the end of August? Let, let me get a little bit further with DEP. Let you guys think about what open issues that, that may, may not be and, and we wrap it up, you know, third week of August, maybe.
And, and what I might suggest to that is, is that, you know, post this meeting, you individually might say, I still have a question about whatever. And if you address that to Rebecca, when we come back together, we knew who to bring in or what we needed to do to prepare to help and provide the answer. So, you know, feel free to do that. And we don't mind being, being able to adapt to whatever those issues might be in between.
Yeah, I think if definitely if we have any specific topics that we want to cover, we should have that listed by, you know, certainly the beginning of August, you know, the, the first week or whatever of August, not before that. Hopefully before that.
I would like to see a list go to Rebecca so that when we do an agenda, there's actually a list of items that we can cover and sort of hopefully move through sort of organ, in an organized fashion.
And in the meantime, my homework, and in the meantime, my homework will be to prepare a, what we believe to be the final waiver request, and we'll submit that to Rebecca as well.
I would like to see that. That's one of the things I've been wanting to see is the final so that that's something that we can review as part of our question. Because my thought was I'm going to go through all my notes, figure out what my questions are, and then I can match it up with the final waivers you have and then go from there. So that would be helpful sooner rather than later.
We will, we, I would, there you go. I raised my hand. And, and one of the things that the reason why we need to come back and now do the final was that obviously it's a culmination of our civil discussions and everything else that helps the form. But so now we've gone through all those, we, we, we can identify with that.
Great. Thank you.
All right. So date wise. Chris, did you have something you mentioned on the, was the, the 19th good for you or was that?
Um, of August, yes, that's fine. It was, it's still mid-July meeting would, would be the issue for me.
Okay. So yeah, the, the 19th of August work, that's the third Wednesday.
Yeah, that's be a scheduled days anyways, which I think is, is better for the process, especially if we're doing Zoom and not trying to sneak one in.
Yeah.
What about you, John? Is that going to work for you? Are you going to be able to attend?
Is fine.
The 19th.
19th of August is fine.
It works for me too.
All right, then I will make a motion to continue application 2019 dash three till the meeting on the 19th of August, 2020.
Seconded.
All those in favor? Kathy Franzen?
Hi.
John Stokes?
Hi.
Chris Goodwin?
Hi.
And I, Jason Norman. All right.
Thank you all very much. And thanks for Chip and for Brian joining us tonight.
And thank the board for their time and courtesy.
Okay, everybody be safe out there. We'll talk to you in August.
See you guys next month. Thanks. No travel time, you guys.
Thank you.
Go on.
All right. So next thing on the agenda is the minutes unless somebody else has something they want to cover before.
Can I, I, I just want to, well, I wanted to ask, I guess, before Paul jumped off, but he's already gone. But what do you guys think about, I was going to ask Paul for a couple of sample decisions so that it's something that we can look at, a sample denial and a sample acceptance, and then we can look at the different ones so that we have an idea of like how we want to frame things for the next meeting. So in case, because looking at that might help us put together any questions we may have or bring up things that maybe we haven't thought of.
I like that.
Sure.
All right. I'll, Rebecca, would that be something you could ask Paul if he could send us just samples? It doesn't have to be, you know, anything fancy, but like a sort of a template of some sort?
Yes, definitely. I'll, I'll make the inquiry and send something over to you as soon as I receive it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right. So we need to make a motion to close that hearing and continue it. We never did that when everyone was on. So someone want to do that?
We didn't.
No, we didn't.
Yeah, I did. Make a motion. We continue the hearing. We close.
No, 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 we, we made a motion to continue till the 19th. I seconded it.
Oh, okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure we covered ourselves. Sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, I, I haven't recorded that, that Jason made the, the actual motion and that Chris seconded.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we follow the procedure. That's all.
Sorry, Jason.
What did you think you were voting on, Kathy?
Just the date.
That's the real question.
I thought we were just doing, doing, talking about the date and that's all. I'm sorry. Pardon me. Never mind. Unauthorized thought. You guys want to do minutes? Did you guys get a chance to read them?
Yeah.
Any comments, questions?
You were excellently done as always by Rebecca.
They were very, very nice.
I had a couple of comments on them. First of all, the second page she wrote, the board left through the items in the letter I won. I was laughing because Rebecca knows it was me and she was so nice and not, didn't say, Kathy made him read it out loud. And but then I do have a couple of just quick changes though. So in line 153, 155, 176 and 179. So it says Groveland Town Council, that should actually be, council should be the other form of council, C O U N S E L, not C O U N C I L. That was it. Those are my changes. Oh, actually one more thing. There was a point Rebecca where you had said, I, I got disconnected. And it was like 7:50 PM or something like that, line 217. But I noticed that I never rejoined, but I commented. So maybe we should put in that I rejoined. I think I came in at like right around line 346 or like right in between 41 and 42. So maybe you just throw that in there that I rejoined.
All right, I get it.
Thank you. That was it.
All right. I will make a motion to accept the minutes from the Wednesday, June 3, 2020 meeting as amended.
One comment on that, it actually, line 217 says you work, you, you connection, you lost it on 122 according to this, unless there was another one that I missed.
Oh, okay.
So 217 says Kathy, Kathy Franzen reconnected at 7:56 and 122 says you lost connection at 7:50.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I stand corrected.
Align with your timeframe?
Yeah, that sounds about right. Yeah. Okay, perfect.
All right.
Thank you. I didn't catch that. I was actually looking for it too. I'm like, when did I come back? I was trying to think about it. So, thank you. But I'll, I'll second the motion to approve the minutes as amended.
All right. Those in favor? Kathy Franzen? John Stokes?
Hi.
Chris Goodwin?
Hi.
And I, Jason Norman. All right, is that it?
To adjourn at 9:21 PM.
Seconded.
Those in favor? Kathy? John?
Hi.
And Chris? And I. All right. I guess I'll see you guys in a month and a half or so.
Wonderful.
A good summer, guys.
Have a good fourth. Not that we're really doing much, but.
Happy fishing, John.
Thank you.
Deep trip.
Careful out there.
Oh, yeah.
All right, good night, guys.
Good night.